WCTV and at the city's website at wyzetta.org/wcTV. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person, at the meeting in advance, or by logging into the Teams call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our chambers and on the cable channel. You'll be asked to unmute and you may begin your comments and your camera needs to be on. All public comments must include your full name and address. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge Allegiance. I would ask you to stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, without individual liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is roll call. Let the record reflect that the entire council is present this evening. Next, I need to read a statement about a closed meeting that occurred earlier this evening. So earlier this evening, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., a closed meeting of the Wyzetta City Council was held pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D .05 subdivision 3B, the attorney-client privilege exception to the open meeting law, to discuss the following litigation: Lake West Development LLC, 200 Lake Street East LLC, and Kirk Fretham, plaintiff versus City of Wyzetta, defendant. And the second item is Dre Trustee LLC versus the City of Wyzetta, defendant. The meeting was closed to permit the city council to meet with its attorneys to review and candidly and openly discuss absolute confidential and privileged matters related to the above reference or the previously referenced litigation. Following our closed meeting, we had an open workshop meeting and reviewed the following. We reviewed and updated our long-term financial plan, review, had a review of our preliminary 2026 general fund budget and fee schedule, and we discussed future council workshop topics. So that was the open meeting after the closed meeting. Now we're moving on to the next point on the agenda, which is to approve the agenda. So I need to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented or any suggested changes.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. The next item is the public forum. Just as a reminder, for those and the members of the public attendance sites, you're interested in speaking, please state your name, address, and indicate if you're representing a group, and limit your comments to three minutes. The minimum is actually on the agenda. Please fill out a card in the back of the room and hand it to staff and you'll be able to speak at that time. So are there anyone on teams that wanted to speak at the public forum, or do we have any public forum cards?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so we're going to move past that one. And the next one is new agenda items. Does the council have any new agenda items that they would like to discuss and bring up? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The next is the approval of the consent agenda. And on our consent agenda tonight is approval of the city council workshop minutes of June 17th and June 24th, regular and meeting minutes of June 17th, 2025. Approval of the check register, adoption of Resolution 1925, accepting donation from the Miles Family Fund of the Minneapolis Foundation, approval of a grant agreement extension for the intensive comprehensive peace officer and education training ICPOET program, approval of special inspection and construction materials and testing services with Braun Intertek for the clubhouse renovation, acceptance of the city manager resignation and leave request. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, or if there needed any items to be pulled.
I have a question on 7E.
Go ahead, Mr. Parkill.
So we have a foundation there at the warming house, and so apparently has to go through some sort of testing. There's part of its inside, part of its outside. Is it the outside that we're worried about that maybe needs to make sure that it can become inside, an inside foundation? Or what is the purpose of the $6,500 spend?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Parkill, all I can tell you is that it was part of the planned construction project in terms of the details, so it's in our budget. Director Kelly, I think, could probably speak a little bit more eloquently about it than I can.
Glad you're here, Mike. Director Kelly.
Councilmember, Councilmember Parkill and council, the special materials and testing is exactly that. We are expanding the building, requiring additional foundation around the outside of the building. This testing is for that additional foundation that's to be constructed.
So the new part, not testing the old?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Just your question, Mr. Parkill?
Yes.
Okay, so now I would approve a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. So we're on to the new business part of our agenda. And the first up is to consider approval of the first reading of amendments to the tree preservation ordinance to allow for an exemption for golf courses. So I'm turning that over to you, Mr. Dahl, or to Mr. Sharp, or?
Mr. Mayor, Director Sharp's going to walk us through this one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sharp.
One moment, sorry about that.
That's fine.
Want to make sure I bring up the presentation. Thank you, Mayor. So as stated, this is a potential amendment to the tree preservation ordinance contained within the zoning code of our city ordinance. So I started with this slide because this is a little bit unorthodox and going forward, but with that, I wanted to make sure that I could provide a good introduction. Tradition with staff brings forward ordinance amendments, we bring forward a single ordinance amendment for proposal. In this instance, we have three different ordinances, and the council may choose between one of the three options. I'd also like to entertain the ability that if council has reviewed their packet and it is comfortable with a single option, that staff could expedite the presentation this evening and present a single option if that was council's choosing. So if there was one that was predominantly sought by council after review of your packet, I would be open to hearing that, going through that particular item, and explaining how that would affect the ordinance. If not, I can certainly present on all three items, and we can proceed through and then act on a single ordinance at the end of the presentation and meeting.
Council, anyone have an opinion on what has been proposed?
So Mayor, if I understand, what's been discussed here is that if there's a preference for one option, now would be the time to say it? I mean, depending on how that went, I could say?
You're just trying to be efficient.
I'm going through other options.
In an effort to be efficient, as the mayor had stated, if there is a overlying option that council's very comfortable with upon review of the staff's memo, we could go through that one to expedite your time. If there's not, I could still move through all items and do so promptly.
Well, I guess I would suggest to the council that maybe we look at option one at this point only and have discussion about that in the terms of potentially saving time.
How do others feel?
Go ahead, Mr. Parkill.
I guess I take a little different tack. For the benefit of the public who might be interested in this, I thought that the packet was very good in explaining the different options and why the planning commission came to a different conclusion than the standard. And I thought that was valuable to go through. I think to hear it in the public forum and for the public to hear it all would make sense. I don't think it'd take that long, but even if it does, I think it's for the best interest of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Parkill. Anyone else want to win?
I think those are very good points.
I was wondering if you could, Director Sharp, explain more specifically the difference between two and three? I think that's something the planning commission?
I think there's consensus to go through all three.
Yes, I think there is as well. So I think I'm going to start through that. So I'll start with my original presentation then. Council's being presented three different ordinance options for first reading this evening. That is an irregular path that is not a standard one. However, it is one that staff wanted to bring forward based upon the history of this ordinance. So opening up the presentation with that, I'm going to go into the general background of the tree preservation ordinance as a whole. So originally in October of 2022 is when city council first adopted our tree preservation ordinance. You can see our general guiding principles behind that ordinance here, but it was to expand the city's tree canopy, ensure the safety of that tree canopy, and then collect fees where applicable when tree canopy was being ensured that it was a sustainable practice and those trees lived for a number of years. Since that time, it's been a bit of a living document with the city in that we've learned as we've adopted this, as this was a document or a ordinance that was, I would say, first in its class in terms of the depth that the city wanted to go to for preserving our tree canopy and then incentivizing those who do. With that, we've done a number of updates to standardize, clarify, and otherwise make sure that this was not done by interpretation, but very clear as we proceeded through and learned from lessons as we were working through the ordinance. In the case of Woodhill Country Club, they had begun working with staff in October of 2023. City Wyzetta has two golf courses within our city limits that are also split into adjacent communities, so not all of their grounds are contained within the city of Wyzetta. And with that, the Woodhill Country Club came forward with a significant capital improvement project of their own to improve their grounds. And part of that would require the removal of some trees and then planting of additional trees. They began working with staff to determine how our new ordinance would affect their overall plans for their site. And for multiple years, we're able to work with staff on trying to understand what those project costs would be, where the trees would need to be planted, how this affected their site both within the city of Wyzetta and within their out-of-city jurisdiction grounds. Effectively, they were told that there would be some financial pieces with this. The tree preservation ordinance at times prefers trees that they may deem more hazardous because it's through a very technical process, but they may be proactive in that, and so that may affect some of their planning and future site assessments. And then there's the ongoing cost burden of when you are planting trees that I'd noted before to ensure that they live. We keep an escrow for a set period of time, three years, and reduce over that timeframe. And so it was identification of how that would impact their site, their financial impact, and their plans. On May 20th of 2025, Woodhill Country Club brought forward a proposal to the city council at a workshop meeting, essentially identifying how this issue affected their overall plans going forward right now. This project is proposed to begin this year, this summer, if it hasn't already begun, and they sought some clarification from city council or potential relief from city council through an exemption in the ordinance. At that workshop, city council generally directed staff to come forward with a best-practice way of exempting golf courses of rather unique land use within the community from the tree preservation ordinance. With that very high-level general direction, staff brought forward a proposal that I'll go in through that is option two within this to the planning commission that was staff's attempt to find a best-practice median of full exemption blanket, which is kind of option one, and then a caveated exceptions through option two. And I'll go into each one of those individually and try to explain those differences between than where the planning commission landed on their item. On June 17th, 2025, the planning commission held their public hearing. Representatives from Woodhill Country Club and Wyzetta Country Club were present, though Woodhill Country Club was the primary party speaking on that behalf. I would note that, as I did to the planning commission, they are not the applicant in this proceedings. This is a city council-directed ordinance amendment, so it does change the dynamics slightly. And the reason why I want to identify this this evening is that representatives from Woodhill Country Club are here and would like to be able to state some of their cases for the additional public record upon the conclusion of this presentation. So typically, that would be forwarded to an applicant. In this case, it's not as cut and dry with that, and so I wanted to make sure that that was called out now. So the first ordinance, potential ordinance amendment for council is the high-level, very clear golf courses would be exempt from the tree preservation ordinance. This would mean that there would be no fees collected, no review of plans. It is the most generic of exemptions with the caveat that we would use the definition of golf course, that's the common definition, that does help clarify to make sure we aren't accidentally straying into someone calling their yard a golf course. So we are making sure that we've thought of those other opportunities. We're relatively confident that this is a low-risk.
There are homes in Wyzetta that have a whole of a golf course on their property.
There are, which is why we wanted to make sure we were still being thorough. This was our first potential look at this. Ultimately, what staff decided to bring forward to planning commission was option two. Option two provided for perhaps a little bit more of a catch-all. Essentially, there were two provisions put into the ordinance. The first is that any golf course may seek an exemption from the tree preservation ordinance. However, they needed to make a formal request to the city council. The city council then needed to approve that request and could place any reasonable conditions. That's the first part of that ordinance, if you look at that language. The second part was to allow for a project-specific exemption administratively by working with staff. And what this was really attempting to touch on for a project was the fees and being able to move quickly rather than needing to be able to get on a council agenda. So that if for some reason a golf course didn't already have an overall exemption, they could come forward on a very project-specific basis, seek that exemption on that project, and it would be administratively done by staff and would not be reviewed by council. This is what was presented to the planning commission. Planning commission reviewed essentially both options. Upon doing so, they kind of decided to, I would say that option three is a hybrid approach from option two. Option three is what planning commission worked pretty diligently on during that public hearing, to come forward with a lifetime exemption, but with the requirement that a full tree management plan be created. Tree management plan, when they were reviewing the ordinance, had not yet been defined. It is not a term that is currently within the ordinance. The draft ordinance includes the definition of a tree management plan, which you see before you, but it is essentially a very high-level planning document for a golf course where they would plan their entire site in great length and detail with specific detail given to their trees, do a complete inventory of the site, and then have a staged removal and replanting plan that would then be brought forward to the city council, which then could be approved or denied, and if approved, any conditions could be added. So it essentially took the condition one from option two, the council approval with conditions, and then instead of going project-specific, essentially went long-term, like a comp plan type of document, only just for the trees on a golf course. The planning commission certainly recognized that there were difficulties created, particularly by having a golf course in multiple jurisdictions, and the city of Wyzetta's code only applies to the land that resides within the city of Wyzetta. The attempt that, and this is because their minutes have not been fully adopted, so I'm attempting to summarize this piece, but I believe their attempt with this was largely to address that concern by creating a holistic site plan. Ultimately, that is a more cumbersome process than what was originally identified as staff's directive to come forward with. So we are presenting all three options because staff had relatively clear direction to come forward, not a larger process. And so that's why you're seeing this in a three-step stage or a three-option stage rather than as a single ordinance like you would typically see. With that, staff is looking for one of the three options for a first reading. We would then bring the second reading back at the next council meeting for final publication. I'm available for any questions.
Yeah, so before we open up the questions, we will be giving Woodhill a chance to comment tonight, but only after council's questions are addressed of staff first. So we'll start with that. Would like to begin with questions of staff. Mr. Parkill?
What does ORNO require?
ORNO is still evaluating their ordinance. They were originally modeling it after hours. Their planning commission has gone in a slightly different direction with that piece. I have not checked since the last planning commission whether they've gotten any further. I called afterwards because that was a question that the planning commission had as well. They hadn't adopted a full ordinance at the time that I'd called.
But their ordinance today doesn't?
No.
Require any of this today?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Council member?
Director Sharp, option number two is, oh, right back where you were, please.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
I was going into the detail.
Oh, thanks. Option two is just a, as it reads, so are they exempted from the tree preservation ordinance forever or just during the work of this project-specific?
That's why I was going back to this one.
Thank you.
So I was thinking ahead. Thank you, Mayor and councilmember. They are both. So option one is a forever exemption. They would come forward, they seek that from council, council would grant that. Option two was the project-specific administrative. If council wasn't comfortable with that potentially, they could make that as a condition, or that was principally added by staff as a project-specific way for somebody who hadn't yet asked for the exemption.
That was helpful. Mayor, can I?
Please.
Say a few more? Could you also explain to me what their options are today as the tree preservation ordinance is in effect and live?
The two options today that any party would have business or commercial development, essentially, within the community would be to seek a variance, which could be difficult because they would need to explain, meet the practical difficulties measures. There's a potential that could have been an option for a golf course, but it would also need to be unique, and with two of them, it's quasi-judicial, so I could see where there could be concerns with that. And secondarily would be to seek a text amendment, which is quasi what Woodhill Country Club sought by coming to council. So that's a little more open, but any party may seek a text exemption and propose one at any time. I'm sorry, text amendment.
Understood. I appreciate that. I always, throughout this whole thing, I kept wondering, why aren't they asking for a variance? So it was helpful to hear a little bit more context of that. If I may, council?
Yeah, go ahead, one more.
Yeah, I do have just to narrow it down. Just give me one second.
It won't be your only chance, Molly, so.
No, I know, but this is high-level that I kind of want to get my head around it before I hear from Woodhill, if that's okay with everyone.
Excellent.
I just would like you to, I understood the escrow portion of it because that was stated quite clearly in the planning commission meeting, and that seemed like a pretty high number. Could you be more specific on like what a fee it looks like for a project like this? You know, there's this big financial implication, and other than the escrow, I'm having a hard time understanding what exactly the numbers are.
I'm going to tag in.
Is that a subtle?
Mayor, if I may, I'm going to tag in a member of the team that works with us on a day-to-day basis.
Makes sense.
I'm very pleased that he has made his time available.
Sure, we'll have the expert.
He would be able to expound on the actual fees.
Yeah.
Associated with this project. He's worked on it for two years, and I don't want to sound out of turn.
Welcome, City Forester Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Not a very subtle way to ask me up here, Alex.
Well, you're welcome.
Thank you. So yes, the escrow itself, so that would be guaranteeing the replacement of trees on-site. And that, we have some discretion there. Really, what we're looking for is a number that makes us feel confident that these trees will survive, and if something goes wrong, we'll have enough money available to step in and round out the replacement plan. The fees, so fees in lieu of tree replacement, those would apply if and when a certain amount of that calculation, that planting can't occur on-site for whatever reason. That number is not flexible at all. That is set in our fee schedule. Currently, that's $300 per inch. That is not replaced on-site, that would be a fee in lieu of tree replacement. The escrow is similar. Regardless of what the fee is at any given year, it's 110% of the fee in lieu. So the escrow right now would be $330 per inch. And that, in this case, we've, in working with Woodhill and trying to figure out a more palatable way to secure these plantings, we decided that it would be appropriate to, because these applicants have an inherent interest in the success of these trees, we would instead base the escrow, the expected mortality rate of a replacement plan. So kind of a generic number that we usually throw out there is like 20%. You would expect to lose those trees. So we thought, well, let's collect 20% of the standard rate. And then that way, if we do see a 20% loss in the trees, we at least, you know, we feel good about that because we have the funds to, again, fulfill that replacement requirement. So I guess that would be $66 per inch if we were to go with that 20% number. But again, the fee in lieu of tree replacement is not flexible with our current ordinance.
Okay, so there isn't some sort of permit fee that's also? I guess fees felt like a really vague word in this context, or I just wanted to be clear that?
Yeah, so there is a permit fee, and with that, for the actual tree removal, there is a permit that's required, and each situation is a little bit different, but there's a plan review costs built into the permit fee, and that's $50 per hour of plan review.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions of council? Mr. Parkill?
That actually triggered a question or two. On the fees, I've played enough golf to know that half the balls in my bag find those trees and the other half find whatever water is around. So there are a lot of trees. And whether it's $300 per inch or $33 per inch, it sounds like a lot of money for a golf course. Do you have any idea what kind of numbers we're talking about here overall for the golf course?
So is the question with the current proposal on tree removal?
Yeah.
What the cost would be? I don't know off the top of my head, but I bet they could share that number.
Let's just hold that question, and we'll come back to you and just make sure all the other questions are answered, and then we'll come back to that one, Alex, if you're okay with that, just so everyone gets a chance, and then we'll let them give you their estimate.
Sure. It also looks to me like we have three options, but we really have four, with the second option being two options, but the options are triggered by the applicant as opposed to us with the ordinance. Is that correct? So the golf course could seek one or the other option if we approved ordinance option two. Is that correct?
Could you speak to that, Director Sharp?
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Parkill, yes, the ordinance option two encapsulates both option one and two, so it does give an additional option for the applicant. But for council, the way that the ordinances are presented is that ordinance option two is a package deal at this time.
And in that, if the golf course were to take option two, the administrative route, if we were to approve this option, are we then waiving fees entirely? I mean, it talks about primarily waives the fees. So are the fees, this is referring to the very fees that you just talked about?
So there, to clarify, this would waive some of the escrow fees over time. This doesn't waive if they had direct removal, as those are within the fee schedule. So this is specifically attempting to address when you're doing tree replacement and the trees that would then be replanted, you have an escrow for those coming, for those to reach a level of maturity where they're going to survive, that three-year mortality rate.
I'm not sure I quite followed that. So in this option to the screen in front of us, the fees that would be waived would include those fees?
It would only be those fees. So this specifically refers to a section of the ordinance that is about their replacement. replacement, not when they're doing fee in lieu of the replacement.
Okay.
So fee in lieu of the replacement would remain the same. This has to, this is referring to a section of ordinance that is to the tree replacement, correct?
Do you have the text that we're, that we're referring to here available?
Yes, I can bring that up. I'll need a moment, though.
What I'm trying to get to is an understanding of the financial burden that we've placed on a golf course, but depending on what we do here for policy.
Just, will there be other questions? I have a couple, but they're gonna, I'm not gonna ask them right now, I'm just trying to get a sense of, is there more questions? Sounds like there is, so we'll give him a second and then we've got a couple more rounds of questions.
So are we taking questions now?
We'll just wait because he's giving them.
Okay, right.
Mr. Mayor, just as a, kind of a, numbers that we're talking about, we're beginning of the conversation with Woodhill, we were talking to numbers in the six digits and the escrow essentially would, you know, double that generally. So that the removal of the escrow is a significant amount if it's a big project. And that gives you a magnitude of how much, how onerous this ordinance is for that type of use as well.
And maybe how many trees they're removing?
Absolutely, yeah. And inches, yeah.
Yeah. I am very confident that when Woodhill gets up here, they'll be able to give us the exact numbers of the financial implications. But we're going to go back to the language, which was Mr. Plockish's question, and then from the language, how would it apply?
City Attorney, if you'd like to weigh in on that, perhaps under that tree exemption?
Yeah, sure. We, we've got a lot of moving parts here, but I think, Mayor and Councilmember Plockish, I think the question was, under that, that staff recommended option was, was which, which part of the fees were, were waived? Was it the actual replacement or was it the escrow? And I think it's the replacement that would be exempt under 93606D.
So if I'm to understand that, if, if a golf course was going to redesign their course and they needed to take trees out to accommodate that, but it was their full intention to replace all those tree inches with whatever the reconfiguration is, that essentially all of that would be exempt from fees, is that correct?
Mayor and councilmember, I think if they were replacing it, they would, because they would, yeah, they would be replacing trees, but that would be true for any, any project. If you, if you can replace the trees that you're taking out, you don't have to pay any fees.
But they'd still have to pay the escrow.
Yes, right. The, the proposed change here was that if you couldn't replace all the trees and you had to pay the fee in lieu, you wouldn't have to do that if you're a golf course and you have a tree preservation plan approved by the city forester.
But either way, they still have to pay the, the escrow.
Escrow.
Okay.
Yes. No?
That's why I'm asking the questions. Because it has a dramatic effect on
It does.
financials of the club and
That's a good question.
I want to make sure that we, as a council, understand the effect of whatever policy we adopt today.
Of course.
Seems to me that as, they are able to manage their trees as they see fit because they are competent tree people and they're incented in the right way to have beautiful golf courses. So they would not be charged if they cut down a big tree and they would not have to do an escrow. They would do what they need to do. I'm sure they're like, Wayzata Country Club in their notes said they're putting, they're doing a whole renovation and they're putting hundreds of trees back in. Whether that meets the inches, I doubt it, but maybe it does. But this is kind of their way of managing their own beautiful golf course.
Yes.
But if I heard Mr. Plockish's question correctly, option one is just a pure exemption, like everything's off the table. Option two is relieve, relieve the burden of some of the fees but require a tree plan.
Yeah.
Option three is like a hybrid where the planning commission came back with additional layers of checks and balances they wanted to add to staff's proposed two. So the way that I read it, and if I got it right, you know, correct me or not, but option one is just flat-out exemption. Option two is, we're going to relieve the fees, but you still have to have a tree plan that is submitted. And then option three is some hybrid version that the, the planning commission came up with that puts more control measures on, on the process. That's my layman's version of how I read the three options.
I think that was really helpful, Mayor, but the part that keeps throwing me is in that option two, I believe it's worded removes some fees. So to me, I was curious, as, as Councilmember Plockish is, which some, is it escrow or is it fee in lieu of replacement?
So I'm going to make a suggestion. So let's keep the questions going, but as we go through our discernment process of pros and cons of each one, if option two is preference, then let's be really explicit on the definition so that we're really clear. If that's favored, then let's be really clear about it. If option one's favored, option two is irrelevant. So let's, let's leave it as a thing that needs to be tightened up. If option two's preference, then let's tighten up.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So I think there was some questions from Councilmember Sorenson.
Yeah.
We got a sidebar going on here.
I think they're stuck on my question.
Just getting some clarity on the fees. I want to make sure that
I haven't seen that.
It's clear.
What?
The sum.
The sum of the dollars?
No, that you asked, you said there was some, some
On the second, second proposed motion.
I don't see it on this page anyway.
On our second proposed motion.
What pages is it?
They put it on the screen.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it was actually on one I can't see right now.
Oh. Well, that doesn't help.
Was it in the packet?
So do we need more time to clarify or is that what we're asking for?
Are you looking for that, that page in the, in the packet?
Mayor, council, the way that the city forester and I read the ordinance as presented in option two was the escrow, I would look to, how he wrote the section. So while I don't generally defer away from that, that was the original intent with staff was coming forward was the escrow portion, not the fee in lieu portion of the ordinance. So I apologize for that.
Okay, so let's, let's go to what was drafted and what was
Clarity.
your intent when you drafted it, David? And then let's, as what we're reacting to. We always have the right to change it.
We sure do, Mayor. Yeah, no, well, my intent was to try to reflect the direction of staff, so I, I don't have an agenda here.
No, 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 I don't mean it that way.
But, but I think that part of the complication is option two actually has two options in it.
Right.
Right? And so that was the orig, that came out of the original direction from council at the workshop. And so that was to create an exception where council could review something and it would be totally exempt from the ordinance. So that is in option two. The council path gives a golf course operator the ability to, exemption from the entire chapter, but they have to come to council and then council can put conditions on it. So, so it is true
That's one flavor.
That, you're right. The administrative path is a little different. There you need a tree preservation plan and the way I read it now, it only applies to the fee in lieu stuff. It doesn't apply to the escrow. Doesn't mean we, if we wanted to. And I think option three that council looked at is just like
Yeah, we didn't, the planning commission did.
I'm sorry, planning commission did. They thought, ah, let's do away with that administrative thing, let's put it all with council, but we want more tree plan is. So if somebody has a tree plan, they could come to council and they can be exempt from both. So I know that's very complicated. I think
Well, but it, but the, the distinction that you just offered, though, is it's a council choice. We could grant an exemption or it could be something administrative.
Yeah, for, for option of the three ordinances, ordinance two and ordinance three give council, gives council the authority to exempt from all the fees, escrow, fee in lieu, and really all the regulations of the chapter. In the, in the planning commission version, though, they want, they want an applicant to come forward with a tree management plan. That was the new one. The first one is the blanket exemption, as you said. You would just be changing the ordinance so the golf, golf operators could ignore the tree preservation ordinance on them.
I want to pause there. Mr. Plockish, did you get clarity to your question? Do you feel comfortable with that response?
Uh, kind of. And that's really the reason for my question on these ones in option two, because I want it, I, I think it was what I suspected, but I wasn't sure, and I think I'm sure now, which is that if we go with that, the escrow fees would still be there and that could be very onerous to a golf course because it's, and it would get into discussion phase, which we're not there yet, but I, I would kind of be opposed to that, which kind of directs me on where I'd like to go on these options, but, but thanks for clarifying.
In our packet, which it says, option, option two, number two, this allows a golf course to, to present a path for a project-specific removal that primarily waives fees and/or escrow, but still requires the preparation of tree reservation, preservation plan. So are we adding back escrow or fee in lieu somewhere here?
Not adding back in, Mayor, council, not adding back in, further clarifying, I would say, as there, this section moved forward relatively quickly with city attorney and council, from council direction at that work session. And with that, I think you're seeing a potential piece of where speed can sometimes
Yeah, I'm going to make a suggestion. The question behind Mr. Plockish's question is what's the financial implication? We still don't have that data, so let's just, let this keep moving along, they're going to give us the impact and then that'll be a consideration for us all. Mr. Sorenson, do you have some questions?
Well, just a quick one. How long do we hold the escrow money?
Councilmember Sorenson, the standard schedule is a three-year process that begins upon installation. So once they're done with their replacement plan, I generally go on site and do the first inspection and then for a month, 36.
Thank you. I just had two really quick ones. Remind me when this tree ordinance went into effect, what was the date? The one on record today?
I believe it was October, I'm sorry, the original is October of 2023, the secondary with changes was in 2024.
Well, it's safe to say that for probably year predating 2023, it was under consideration. And the reason why I'm asking the question is we happen to have two golf courses, the only two golf courses that we have, under major rehab at the same time in the same year. And so I'm just trying to draw up that context. Okay. Any further questions of staff at this time? Okay, so now we're going to give Woodhill Country Club a brief opportunity to state their case. You wouldn't mind approach the dais, name, address who you're representing and a few minutes to offer your perspective. And within that, if you could address Mr. Plockish's question about, the policy of record has X financial implications to you, if you could weave that into your response. You might want to just lift that up to your height there a little bit.
Is this on now? Can you hear me?
Yeah, just, just tilt it up a little bit. There you go. Perfect.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, and the complexities and challenges of this ordinance, I think, was evident with, with the questions and confusion. That's what we've been dealing with a little bit on our side, a lot of it, we're trying to solve this ordinance issue. So, quick introduction, my name's Brian Endiston. I'm here representing Woodhill Country Club to respectfully request exemption from the existing tree ordinance. For over a century, Woodhill successfully maintained our 195-acre property, 73 acres of which reside in Wayzata. Our members join us in part because we maintain beautiful, safe grounds with healthy, mature trees. Our success truly depends on environmental stewardship and we cannot survive without it. We've demonstrated this commitment through 110 years of environmental stewardship, certification as an ottoman cooperative sanctuary since 1994, and a significant investment this year specifically for tree replanting. We consistently plant more trees than we remove. Expert staff managing our property daily, with access to USGA agronomists and university experts for specialized guidance. Yet this tree, this current tree ordinance designed for residential development now treats us like a subdivision project. This creates an impossible situation where we must choose between member safety and bureaucratic compliance. We've experienced a member fatality from a falling tree, multiple near-miss incidents, and just recently had a very large limb fall dangerously close to members. Our professional arborists have identified unsafe trees overhanging our practice green, stating emphatically they would not allow their children to practice or play under that area. While under the current ordinance, we must wait for trees to become dead enough to meet removal standards rather than addressing safety proactively. As stewards of this property, we cannot accept this ongoing risk to our community. Wayzata has only two golf courses and expects to add no more. We represent irreplaceable green space in this community. Other municipalities recognize this. Edina, for example, exempts golf courses entirely, understanding that institutional landowners with proven stewardship records require different approaches than residential developers. We're not asking to avoid environmental responsibility. We're asking for the same exemption other communities provide to established institutional landowners who maintain property primarily as green space. The current ordinance would require us to hire a full-time arborist at approximately $70,000 annually to track our 5,000 trees residing in Wayzata and spending hundreds more on hours of compliance, all while our expert staff already manage these, these responsibilities more effectively than any part-time municipal oversight could. For 110 years, we've partnered successfully with Wayzata, maintaining these grounds as a community asset. We have the expertise, the commitment, and the financial investment to continue the stewardship. What we need is the authority to make safety decisions quickly and effectively without bureaucratic impediments. We're here seeking a collaborative solution that maintains the ordinance's environmental objectives while recognizing that a golf course isn't a developmental project. I respectfully encourage you to approve the first amended proposal exempting property upon which a golf course operates. This allows us to continue managing our property as we have successfully done for over a century, for the safety of our community and the benefit of Wayzata as a whole. Thank you for your consideration.
And if you could, thank you for that statement. Could you comment on, you know, the, the policy of record has what kind of financial implications on you today?
So in if I, our superintendent, Eric Tolsmann, is with me today, so if there's questions, I'd like to help, so.
It was in your memo, so if you just restate.
So, yeah, just to state, our, our total inches to be removed is 314 inches of trees are stated to be removed. Now, with our two-to-one ratio due to the land disturbance we're, we're doing for our project, that doubles to 628 inches and I believe Bennett, $160 an inch. So all in, that's $100,000, $100,480, 20% of which is the escrow amount of $20,100. What's not included in that is the administrative burden of tracking our 5,000 trees in Wayzata. To successfully do that, as the ordinance is written, we would need to take on a staff member to handle that. That's tracking, that's species measuring, that's charting, that is the administrative burden that we'd have to take on to handle property of our size. We can't do it without our existing staff, we need to hire support to handle that.
Does, does that answer your question, Mr. Plockish? Okay, thank you for that.
The three, 14, is that heritage trees or does that include significant trees too?
Go ahead and come up to the dais because we just have to hear your voice, I apologize, sir. Otherwise, our vast viewing audience doesn't get to hear you.
Eric Tolsmann, Building and Ground Superintendent at Woodhill. So it's 314 inches of heritage trees and that is 10 total trees. And so, and one of those trees, you know, currently was in a email that I had sent to, to staff and, and to the mayor, which we are now asking to be exempt from that because it dropped a big limb almost on our putting green. So when in reference to waiting for trees to become dead enough to be removed, you know, that is a, that's a safety burden on me. From a property manager's standpoint, I, I can't, I can't be proactive in these safety measures. I have to get Bennett on site and a track assessment and
Yeah, and before, before we move on from that, I just want to read a statement from Bennett about imminent failure that just needs to be there for context because you wrote this about imminent failure, that there is a imminent failure clause, which says that the city's acknowledgement of imminent failure, it will never penalize a tree manager for mitigating an imminent failure. So if you had a change that moved it to imminent failure to a limb, then you made the call because of safety, we're not going to penalize you for that. So just wanted to state that for the record because that, Bennett, you wrote that, I just wanted to put that into the record. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So you said that there's 314 inches of heritage trees, which is eight trees. How many inches in significant trees?
I believe, how many total inches do you I believe, how many total inches do we have?
Yeah, because I believe if you remove significant trees under this, poll required to replace them one-to-one, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so on the Wayzetta property, we have over like 21,000 inches of significant trees, as documented by one of my staff members over a three-week period.
And you're removing 21,000?
No, that's how many we have. How many we are removing is less than 10% of that, so under 2,000. And as stated in our current, well, it's not in here, but it's about 2,000 inches of significant trees.
It's being removed, 2,000. Okay. Appreciate it.
Mr. Parkill, question?
Is this an ongoing thing? Is this directly related to your work that you're doing on the golf course? Or is this, there's some amount of trees that are needing to be replaced every year? Am I correct?
Correct.
And the numbers you just gave are for this year because of the work being done?
Correct.
Bring it back to council for discussion now. Thank you for that. We may have other questions, but thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here for tonight, and thank you for your work to try to work this out over the last two and a half years. Bring it back to council for discussion. I think we have three options. I guess I'd like to hear some pros and cons, or if you have a preference for one or the other, and try to draw that out to see if we have some consensus towards moving towards one. Who would like to begin that process?
Well, you're looking at me.
I'm looking everywhere. Right? Who would like to start?
I'll go if no one, because I've got some.
Go ahead, Councilmember McDonald, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I've given this a lot of thought, and I've been thinking about how our tree preservation ordinance impacts our residents here, and how a financial burden affects them too, maybe on a different scale than a big, large business like yours, but it still affects them. So, I'm really struggling with the idea of just waiving all financial implications of this, simply because it's too much and too big. With that said, Woodhill's points make perfect sense. So, I think that there can be a balance found here. And what I have wondered, as I have been considering this and reading on it, is, is there a way that we could offer an exemption simply to the operator, not necessarily tie it to a golf course? We trust Woodhill, they deserve an exception, but maybe consider a park dedication fee one time to cover staff time that we've put into this, or offer the public a good that I think would maybe make up for the fact that we don't exempt any of our residents. So, a twist that maybe staff could talk about, but I'm having a hard time with just blanket exemption, and it doesn't quite seem fair. So, that's a proposal I wanted to throw out.
Thank you. Councilmember McDonald. Who would like to weigh in next with commentary, pros and cons of what we're looking at?
Sure.
Sorensen.
Me.
So, first of all, I compliment the planning commission.
They spent a long time chatting about this, and I got a little complicated for them at times, and it took some time to kind of, you know, settle into where they made the recommendation they did. The other thing is, I'm really glad that we have the tree preservation ordinance we do in our city. I think it's effective, I think it's appropriate. You know, it deals primarily with preserving our canopy and how we deal with new subdivisions and new development. And it's aggressive, you know, it deals with all the things that we talked about, including the escrows and fees and evaluation of safety and categorizing trees and all that. So, I think, I think, I think I'm in a good spot with that. You know, it kind of brings me back though to where we were on May 20th, when we had, when we had the workshop, and we talked about it. And I really, I think the essence of the question that we could think about and maybe declutter the conversation a bit is, is that should we impose the purpose and intent of our tree preservation ordinance on a golf course? We have two golf courses in our community, Wayzetta, Wayzetta Country Club, and Woodhill. They are both very highly regarded. So, as we heard a bit from them, and I think if you've, you know, paid attention to that environment at all, golf courses, and especially these are extremely, our two, are extremely good stewards of their properties. The renovations become necessary. These trees were, I mean, your golf course is quite old, so is Wayzetta. They change, they're responsible in what they do and how they go about these modifications. They're carefully planned, they hired national experts. They need to be approved by your board, oftentimes by the members themselves. So, do and why they do it is, I think, a different purpose and the intent of our tree preservation ordinance. And it was mentioned, you know, some communities acknowledge they had exempt golf courses. And if you look at even the West Metro here, I'd say the majority probably of the upper-scale golf courses have done what Woodhill wants to do, what Wayzetta Country Club is doing now. Edina, Interlaken, Golden Valley, Minneapolis Golf Club, Olympic Hills.
Minnetoka.
Minnetoka, I mean, this is not a new thing, and, and they're doing it for good reasons. And so, to me, it seemed like the conversation we had on the 20th was kind of acknowledged that a bit, and we asked staff to go back and put something together that we could react to later in the, and that's what got us here. But it feels like both options two and three, or maybe option two subset two especially and three, attempt to impose our tree policies on a golf course. And to me, it's a little bit apples and oranges. It's a bit square peg and round hole. I think that's evidenced by the fact that it's taken a year and a half of conversation with our community and staff and the golf course, and we still kind of don't agree on things. And, and even evidence, I think there's a lack of clarity, there's on my part anyway, of what exactly will happen with two and three when we start to go down a path of thinking about how we impose our policies on. Option two, this is what caught my attention a bit, is that the applicant may present a tree preservation plan to be approved by the city forester that is consistent with the goals and intentions of the city's tree preservation ordinance. And to me, that kind of draws right back to why we're here to hear a chat about. So, I think, you know, what a golf course does, it's not a new subdivision, it's not a new, you know, type of space that is intended for our, for our policies. So, I think, I think, you know, to me, I'm fine with option one and giving this golf course, which would apply to Wayzetta also, those two golf courses a exemption, because I think anything we do to kind of try to influence that with our tree preservation ordinance, we're getting back to the place that we were before, and I don't know where that's going to go, because even in this conversation, we kind of don't clearly understand it. So, that's, I guess that's how I'm thinking about it.
Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. Mr. Pluckish or Mr. Parkill?
I have a question, though, maybe it'll help. I just have a question without my opinion. If we granted what Councilman Sorensen said, a full exemption, is there any way to retract that if things change? If, do we lose power forever? Or how does that work? What do you think?
Councilmember Parkill, Mayor Mullen, we could always come back and amend the code.
Thank you.
Mr. Pluckish?
Yeah, so, Councilmember Sorensen, that was very eloquent, and I probably can't improve on that a whole lot, but I'll start with this. I also am very proud of our tree preservation ordinance. I was a big part of that, probably even a proponent of it initially. And back when we were debating that, we were thinking, I think, entirely about residences, properties where there was free public access and sites. And I was recalling, and I'm sure I said this on record at one point, that there was a time when I was going to the University of Chicago, and while I was living there, one of the big things was that Mr. T bought this very expensive property and clear-cut the, every single tree was, and of course, that caused controversy, and they actually had a tree preservation ordinance that he just blew off. So, we don't want that in Wayzetta. But then I think about golf clubs, particularly the two that we have here, both of which are very prestigious, have long histories, and in their competency to take care of their trees. So, to me, they have been doing for many, many years, well before we took up a tree preservation ordinance, the very thing that we wanted to get to, and they're very good at it. So, I'm a little, what I'm thinking is that why do we want to embroil them in a bureaucracy that they don't need to be involved in, because frankly, they are probably as good, if not even better, than we are as a community in maintaining the trees. And they do have access to staff and professionals that residencies don't. You know, we go on with our lives, and we're not thinking about tree preservation on our property. We'll take down a tree if we don't have a tree preservation ordinance just because we don't like it, or it provides too much shade or whatever, and we do want to control that in the community. But I think golf courses are kind of a different thing. So, I think you know where I'm going with this. I kind of like option number one. However, having said that, I do kind of like Councilmember McDonald's idea of maybe a one-time park preservation fee to kind of balance things a little bit, not a burden's kind of, at least a nod to what we're trying to do here. And, you know, I think the way that we've got option two, as it was clarified earlier in my questions, and I think we got to where I wanted, it seems to me that the financial burden of bureaucratic proposal is just too onerous for a golf club, because it is their business, and it's a private property. So, right at this point, I guess I would be in favor of option one.
Thank you, Mr. Pluckish. Mr. Parkill?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I thought that might be helpful to you to get that question clarified. So, my thought on this is, first of all, thank you to Planning Commission for their time that they spent on this. City Forester Myron, thank you for your time, staff, and those that created the tree preservation ordinance, kind of all of us, because we worked on that, and there were workshops on it, there were lots of discussions, all of that. But the tree preservation ordinance kind of came out of a need here in Wayzetta. We saw developers come in, and one of our prior council members saw a lot of lots in her neighborhood, clear-cut, completely clear-cut. And so, she was kind of the impetus behind all of this. And the risk is that, you know, this was going to go on and on, and we were going to lose our canopy here in Wayzetta. So, it came out of a need to kind of stop that, and, and as Councilman Pluckish said, you know, we kind of go on with our lives, we're not tree people. So, residents kind of need a little more supervision. So, the, I guess we have plenty to man, my thought is, we have plenty to manage here in Wayzetta, and City Forester Myron is quite busy, and I feel like that you guys are, the golf courses in general are qualified to manage their own properties, they're incented in the right way. I asked the question earlier because I felt like if something goes wrong, can we change that? And, you know, if you guys start not managing your property, right? We need to have some sort of replication. So, that helped me get to the point where I'm at, is to manage your golf courses how you see fit, safety-wise. And, and in my view on that fee thing, maybe we should pay you to help you out with your fees too, to cover your costs, because it's like, you know, it's always nice for a city to be able to tax, but I think you guys have plenty, plenty of expenses yourself. So, I would say option one.
Thank you. I have a page and a half of notes, but I, most of it's already been said, so I won't read most of it. But a couple unique circumstances, I mean, you guys have 195 acres, you know, 73 in Wayzetta. You know, Wayzetta is 360 acres, not all of that is in their golf course, and 16 and a half of it is in Wayzetta. The balance of each of those clubs is in Orno. So, by definition, you have multiple jurisdiction problems, because you have one city that is silent on it, maybe they're contemplating something, but they don't have anything in place today. And then for the minority of each of you guys, you have a very restrictive ordinance, and that's got to be hard to manage. Other cities have more flexible ordinances, Ken already talked about this. It's Edina, Eden Prairie, and Minnetonka either have an exemption, some very specific reference to golf courses being held to a different standard. Their commitment, your commitment to tree preservation is strong, sustainability is a core objective of Woodhill. The ordinance burden is unfair, both from a time and cost perspective. You not only talk about it, but you have proven environmental stewardship with your certified ottoman cooperative example. You have inherent motivation to have a healthy forest, because that's part of a golf course. You need to have a hole to play, but you also want to have a beautiful preserve around it. And I think you guys do a good deal. The thing that tipped me back in November, when this first crossed my desk, was safety and the unintended consequences from safety. We had a near-tree death on public property in here with a severe impalement to an individual. You had a death, and by no fault, the friction involved in safety in a semi-private environment where you have guests and people walking, it's not like a preserve, nobody walks, or you have people walking under these trees. And by that definition alone, I'm for the exemption. Forget about the rest of it. You're managing something that has people walking through it and around it. And, you know, I couldn't sleep at night thinking if some little kid got struck with a limb, because we couldn't figure this out. So, for all those reasons, I'm in favor of option one, of straight-up exemption. So, I think we've heard from everybody. I would now accept a motion on what folks think is going to move forward here. So, I guess I would accept a motion for option one. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. You know, if you're going to go with option one, I would just want to clarify for the record that that is the draft ordinance that starts on page 57 of your packet, so that there's no ambiguity about that. And I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, just because the discussion has been so good in terms of what you've articulated, that your findings would be based on the report and recommendation of the planning commission and as articulated by council at this meeting, because I think that will help support the adoption of option one as well.
Okay, so with that additional preamble to me asking for a motion for option one, would anyone be prepared to make a motion for option one as presented on the screen?
I can make that motion.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Do we have any further discussion on first and second? If there are none, then I would just do, let's just do a roll call vote real quick.
Councilmember Parkill?
Aye.
Councilmember Pluckish?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Sorensen?
Aye.
Mayor Mullen?
Aye, that passes five to zero. Thank you for your time. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Next on our agenda this evening is Consider Adoption Resolution 2125, approving a PUD concept plan at 1022 and 1042 Wayzetta Boulevard East, known as the Lamborghini Dealership. Who will be taking this?
Mr. Mayor, it's the Alex show tonight, so Director Sharp's going to walk us through this one again.
The other Alex.
Yeah, that's right. It's the other Alex, dash two, and it's not as entertaining a show as I would probably wish for you on a Tuesday evening. And it's not as entertaining a show as I would probably wish for you on a Tuesday evening. As stated, thank you, Mayor, this is a planned unit development concept plan at 1022 1042 Wayzetta Boulevard East. The applicant is Walzer Real Estate LLC. Before I get going, again, this is a slightly different process than what council and the Planning Commission have seen as often. It is one that the council and Planning Commission have seen, so it is built into our code. It is not a three ordinance option, but I do want to make sure that I identify what a PUD concept plan is and why specifically the Planning Commission had expressed some concerns about information and things of that nature, and why they are not included in the concept plan. So, a concept plan comes forward as a, essentially a sketch plan, where less, or an applicant can submit for this to submit slightly less information to essentially tease out what some of their initial issues on a proposal may be, and if there's just a general lack of support or significant concern for their proposed application. In doing, they save some of their initial costs in a development process, and then hopefully, the goal for the city is that they bring forward a PUD general plan in the future that is more thought out, more developed, and contains that additional information that the Planning Commission and City Council would be needing for a full proposal. With that, there are significant number of additional items that would be required for this application to proceed, even if council were to approve the PUD concept plan tonight. I'm going to go through these in detail now, and then I've got a summary on them towards the end that moves through them a little bit faster. But there would be a PUD general plan, there would be four variances sought, five design deviations. In the variances are parking setbacks, parking stall depth, access separation to roadways and required parking stalls. And then, rather than read through all five designs, you can identify them on future slides, there are those. In addition, there would be a conditional use permit for a fence exceeding six feet in height, and then a preliminary plat. That would traditionally be one single package coming forward to Planning Commission and City Council. If that were approved, in addition to that, the final plat and final PUD agreement would come forward generally simultaneously to the City Council only. So, with that introduction, I'm going to go into the specifics of this application. 1022 and 1042 Wayzetta Boulevard East, it's adjacent to Central Avenue on the east, Wayzetta Boulevard to the north, and then the Edina Realty and Public Right-of-Way that is utilized for parking for that Edina Realty to the west, and then to the west of that Superior Boulevard. The site is used commercial and residential, and guided for C3 service district. The proposed use of a dry cleaner and Lamborghini dealership are permitted uses within that There are two parcels that they would be seeking to preliminary plat together currently. The vacant parcel, which you'll see a photo of shortly, was a former car garage. And then the secondary parcel to the east is the current location of a Mulberries Dry Cleaning Store, and combined are .88 acres. Huntington Avenue West to the site of this that I referred to is being utilized for Edina Realty parking. One of the questions that Planning Commission was, would that parking be available for this site to be able to utilize? Staff has clarified in their research, yes, that is still public right-of-way, so any of the parking available as part of that area to the west would be able to be counted, or not counted, I'm sorry, used for parking, but would not be counting towards their overall parking counts for the site. To give you a little bit of perspective and to show you where things look like, these photos are taken of the sites from Wayzetta Boulevard looking south. On the left-hand side is the, you can see that there's very limited pedestrian connection. Just off-frame of this photo is a crosswalk, but that is the limited pedestrian connection available for the site, for the Mulberry site. And then to the east, there's a limited portion of that site that contains pedestrian connection to the overall, I'd say Wayzetta Boulevard pedestrian connections throughout. The dealer, or I'm sorry, car repair location on the eastern site, western site, I'm sorry, right-hand side of the screen, has been demolished fully and is prepared for development. It is also the site where you've seen prior development, Caribou Drive-Thru and several others through time. The staff report goes into more detail on these. What is being proposed on the site right now is a demolition of the, a portion of the existing dry cleaner, approximately two-thirds of it, retention of 1,385 square feet of that, and a new 7,845 square foot dealership with six service repair bays for a Lamborghini dealership. It would be a multi-level development, in that the dealership would primarily be at the elevation of Wayzetta Boulevard. The deviation changes from the north to the south of this site, which is one of the reasons why Huntington Avenue South to the west was closed at a prior date, or closed to vehicular traffic at a prior date. And so, there will be a second understory area that contains the access to the service bays on both, for access from the east, from a portion of the area where the existing Mulberries connection comes in, just south of their existing building that is proposed to be demolished. Rather than go through the full aspect of this table, I've got it provided largely in the event there were specific questions to the plans, so that I'd be able to specifically address them. But the staff does an extensive analysis when reviewing a application for conformance with our code. And the primary piece here to note is that the south side would require a parking setback, and that there are existing non-conformities, some of its setbacks. So, those are the two primary items to note on this slide. The existing Mulberries store, because it is existing, would not require variances for this application to proceed. The new setback requirements, such as those on the south side for the parking, would require a variance to proceed. The applicant has put together an overall calculation for their parking demand and their required parking by city ordinance. By city ordinance, they would need a variance of two parking stalls. One thing of note that did come up at Planning Commission during the public hearing was that Wayzetta, or that, I'm sorry, Lamborghini Walzer has proposed one stall that you'll see towards the bottom of your screen in front of the trash enclosure, that would not be compliant with code. We cannot have a parking stall in front of a trash enclosure for its loading and unloading zone. So, that is where one of the two stalls comes from. Additionally, when adjacent to sidewalks, which are, I'll see if I can identify in this plan, towards the north of the site, around the building, code requires that you have a full depth. This is for overhang, or to prevent overhang onto those sidewalks. What is being proposed by the applicant at this time is 18 feet in stall depth. That would require their second parking variance. The third variance is the setback along the southern, and what they've done to mitigate that is they are proposing the six, or over-six-foot wall along this location. So, code requires a 10-foot setback, they're proposing a 5-foot setback, but in lieu of that, they are proposing a round-seven-foot wall, which would require a condition, and is another action for this application. In terms of access and loading for the site, it's quite complicated, because it is an existing site and of an older nature. What is being proposed by the applicant is to remove one access onto Huntington. This access is actually a compliant access by spacing from the intersection. So, no action is needed for that. During the construction process, the second access off of Huntington, which is very close to the intersection of Huntington Wayzetta Boulevard, and does not meet that access spacing that I referred to, would be completely removed. And in so doing, in order to be replaced, would require a variance. There are two existing accesses which are non-compliant, that are not being proposed to be removed. These are in yellow. Because they, as part of this proposal, are not proposed to be completely removed, would not require future variances as part of their proposal. And then the existing access for Mulberries would be removed and replaced, but is a compliant access spacing. The design review for this process, staff has worked extensively with the applicant, and at this time, there are, for exterior building materials, no design requirements that need deviations. The deviations come into primarily site design. Additional details would need to come forward at the PUD general plan, but staff, based upon the additions that have been added principally to the Mulberries' existing location, as they are demolishing portions of the building, they are leaving exposed facades that would otherwise be relatively, essentially attended for interior. They'll, they're adding a wainscoting at the bottom, adding additional windows to be compliant with our ordinance. In addition, they did tweak the, their original design for the Walzer dealership to be compliant with our design requirements for this district. At this time, staff has reviewed and would find all materials and articulations of the building, glass facade, et cetera, to meet ordinance provisions for the architectural design. There are design review deviations principally regarding their site design, and they're one of the reasons why I wanted to highlight sidewalks and those two photos from earlier in the presentation, because they really help illustrate a lot of this. So, the first is some of the existing sidewalk along Wayzetta Boulevard is less than seven feet in width, and they are proposing to maintain that at less than seven feet in width. Additionally, some of the area east of the existing sidewalk, in the area that was in the left-hand photo, does, has a landscape buffer, but does not currently have any sidewalk. And so, that would be, you need a six-foot landscape buffer over the entire stretch, which is a design deviation if they do not propose, which they are not currently proposing, and they would need street trees in those areas. And the applicant has made the case at Planning Commission, and this will ultimately be part of their overall application when they come forward for the PUD general plan, of they are getting tight on site design to be able to fit pedestrian connection, street trees, and the landscape buffer. So, these have been identified as potential design deviations. Additionally, our design requirements also require in between a sidewalk and a building that you have a landscape buffer as well. These are highlighted in the blue areas on the slide, and that area is already constrained in part due to the applicant's note that they are only doing 18-foot depth stalls versus 20, therefore causing some potential overhang onto the interior sidewalks of the site. And then the final item is the area identified in purple on this slide, which is along Wayzetta Boulevard, our design requirements for parking in what is considered the front yard. These three stalls would be considered front yard, while they are slightly behind the Mulberries, they are not behind the overall planes of the building, and by code definition are considered front. As I told you, I was going to be going through kind of at the high level, and then trying to sum that up. So, this is the quick summary of the future processes that are needed and the current application as it's being proposed today. If they come forward with a PUD general plan, there would be the preliminary plat, the four variances that I've detailed, the five design deviations, that conditional use permit for fence height, and then additional City Council approvals would be required for the PUD final plan, the final plat, and a PUD development agreement. Those are generally not brought forward in a public hearing process through the Planning Commission meeting. The city engineer did have several comments. They often mimic where staff's review came in, but wanted to highlight some of these as they are concerns principally with our current standards and where we've enforced them by other sites. These are the parking stalls not being 20 feet deep when adjacent to sidewalks. They are looking for a detailed survey, including grading plans, stormwater plans, et cetera, to come forward. Those would generally come forward as part of that PUD general plan at a later date. They are looking for tree replacement, and where landscaping would go on the site, is there are no landscape plans currently proposed, because they are not required as part of this concept plan. Stormwater management will be an integral part of this project. It is something the applicant has certainly spoken about and noted during the public hearing, but has not been reviewed by staff at this time. The city engineer noted that there will be updated water service required as part of the site, and then due to the proximity to Wayzetta Boulevard, there will be review by Hennepin County and the impacts onto a county roadway. Part of the city's process of a PUD concept and general plan is that they hold a neighborhood meeting. One was held on July 2nd here at the City Hall, and 12 residents, I'm sorry?
June 2nd?
June 2nd. June 2nd. I got ahead of myself. I'm seeing tomorrow already. On June 2nd, 12 residents attended. There were a number of issues addressed. The public hearing, many of these issues were expressed as well. At the public hearing, I tend to try to stay away from trying to summarize staff, or summarize public comments, but to be able to provide a very high level for the council, there were greater neighborhood residents that expressed concerns with the project, and there were some of the immediate neighbors that expressed some support for the project. And if you're looking for that additional context, would invite the City Council to review that at a later date. Since you, since the packet was released, we have received an additional public comment that is included on the dais this evening. There were also additional comments that came in after the Planning Commission that were on their dais that evening as well. When reviewing a PUD concept plan, there are a number of items identified by city ordinance to evaluate what, or how the city will evaluate the benefits of that PUD to the community. These are utilized by both Planning Commission and City Council, and I can go through them, but essentially, does it encourage innovations? Does it encourage higher standards? Does it encourage creative use of unique property? Does it create a development pattern that is in harmony and consistent with the comprehensive plan? And does it create a more desirable outcome that perhaps the traditional ordinance may be able to create? The Planning Commission held the public hearing on June 9th, and ultimately recommended on a 4-2 vote to direct staff to prepare a report and recommendation which is included within your report. They then affirmed that decision unanimously at the next Planning Commission on June 17th. For this evening, staff is recommending, staff and Planning Commission recommended that the council adopt Resolution 212025, approving, approving a PUD concept plan at 1022 and 1042 Wayzetta Boulevard East. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Questions of staff from council? Mr. Sorenson?
Yeah, I have one question. You mentioned the parking on Huntington would be available to anyone? No. Is that on both sides of Huntington?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes. That's available to any member of the public, regardless of whether it's an association with this project or the Edina Realty, as it still remains within public right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Mr. Parkill?
So, one of my concerns is the access that they're, they're taking out and putting back in. It seems, I know we normally have an access point that is in the road. Seems like you could have a very large car turning in there and could, you know, be rear-ended by somebody on Wayzetta Boulevard if they took it kind of slow, and I'm wondering if that would allow a full turn-in and to the right, if you're coming eastbound on Wayzetta Boulevard, and then a nice left into the property? Or would it be more like you kind of angle off of Wayzetta and go in? It's kind of hard to see from the map. Do you have any perspective on that?
I can offer a high level. I'm not, Mayor and Councilmember, I'm not an engineer by trade, but planners generally have a high level of understanding of this. So, I'll do the best that I'm able. This is an existing condition in many ways, and with the level of traffic to the site and it being public right-of-way, I, I do not believe that there's going to be a significant impact from today's condition to this proposal. That being said, I would feel more comfortable trying to answer that more detailed question at a PUD general plan, when we're getting traffic numbers and full review, rather than this high-level concept plan.
I just don't want to create a problem. And it is an existing, I guess it's going to be going back into the exact same spot, so it is probably existing condition. And... And maybe this question that we can uncover, but have there been before, or is that a problem area of any kind?
Council member, or Mayor, council member, I believe that that would be an item of additional study at a PUD general plan rather than the high-level concept for that. But excellent question. Thank you.
Other questions of staff?
Got one. I'll, but this is a little bit oddball one, but I know that that one property to the west used to be a gas station, and now it's leveled. Is there, has there been any oil, gas leakage, underground tank mitigation issues lingering or in the past? Do you know?
I think I got it. Mayor, council member, I'm going to attempt to answer it, and if City Manager Dahl has some supplemental, he can weigh in on it. I believe the leaking underground storage shank, all of those items have been fulfilled at this time, and that it is, for lack, I don't want to say clean site yet, but the proper processes have been gone through to mitigate from a gas station to date.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember McDonald?
Yeah, Director Sharp, I, I also am a little bewildered about the access points, particularly one you circled in red when you were showing us. Could you just offer a little bit more clarity on, maybe take these, specifically this one in red? Is this, is this one that's going away, or will still be used?
Yes, so, Mayor, council member, the one that circled in red, red was not to necessarily denote good, bad. It was coloration, just to start with that basis. Secondarily, it was to identify that a variance would be needed because it is being completely removed during the construction process. So it is an existing access at this date. During the construction process, they are 100% removing it. Therefore, it loses its existing rights to be there.
Okay.
Therefore, to be reinstalled at that location, which is non-compliant with the 40-foot separation from an access, or that 40-foot access separation distance required by code, the reinstallation requires a variance during the process.
Okay, so in order to get into this parking lot as it's written in this concept, there's only one access point that's actually conforms to what we want to see from our...
As proposed, correct.
That's what I mean, in this concept.
As is currently on the site, there are two. One is being removed largely due to grade change. That's the purple X south of the red.
And the green one would comply, but it's down the hill.
Correct. And due to grade change would present some level of difficulty, essentially having access to the northern part of the site.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, now invite the applicant, if they wish to comment on their application. You don't have to, but you're invited to if you wish to make any commentary. Just state your name and address and who you're representing, please.
Yeah, good evening, council. Brandon Grease, Grease Architectural, 500 North Commercial Street, Nino. Just here today, I think Alex did a fantastic job representing our project and to talk a little bit about the, the red access point and the purple. As we develop further back in the site, currently that, the old gas station, kind of, there's a hill behind it that goes down, and with our building getting deeper, is forcing us to bring that grade up. So you can actually see where that purple X is. We have a retaining wall now, so that's why we can't use that access drive anymore. The red circle, we will be matching in, so we're not going to remove that access drive, but we do need to alter the grade of that access drive in order to accommodate our new building elevation. So I just wanted to respond to that, and then if there's any other design questions about the site or the building, I'm happy to speak to those.
Sure. Questions of the applicant from council?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Parkill, go ahead.
What are your plans for the dry cleaning? I know it's going to be there, it's got 10 years on there or something. Is your plans to keep that? And I guess, why did you keep it?
I may ask Paul to join for the, for that. But yeah, the land, the, the dry cleaning as far as the building goes is the renovation, but I think Paul could speak to that.
Mr. Walzer, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I'm Paul Walzer. I actually live at Grove Lane here in Wayzata.
Thank you, Mr. Walzer.
So, good to meet all you guys. The, the conversations with the dry cleaner are ongoing. We have acquired the site, but we're getting a little bit of pushback from Lamborghini in terms of their willingness to share a site with a dry cleaner. So we're kind of trying to come at this in a way that sort of satisfies all the parties. And so it's possible that the dry cleaner may be able to go forward as we're laying this out right now, but it's also possible that the dry cleaning thing is removed entirely. And, and perhaps, maybe even a third possibility frankly, is that the dry cleaner stays and we just retreat back to the former gas station site. So we're, we're in conversation on that, and when I came in here today, I was kind of wondering, because, you know, we, we don't have that piece finalized yet, you know, so is, you know, are we doing this in the right sequence to make sure that, you know, you guys are fully up to speed with what the project looks like? Because that's, that kind of came to our attention here recently, that Lamborghini was having some issues with, with the shared site.
Mr. Pluckish?
Good evening, Mr. Walzer. Glad to meet a neighbor, so to speak.
Yeah.
The glaring question I had when I was studying the packet is, I understand that these two lots were purchased and they're to be combined into one lot. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know. Did we, is that, yes, I guess it is.
Okay. So that, which begs the next question. If one entity owns both lots, why not just use both lots combined to make one business, which is a Lamborghini? Which I think, when we start our discussions, may address many of the concerns we have with all the variances and design standards that could be solved if you had just one business in one combined lot and without the dry cleaner?
Certainly would be our preference as well. The condition under which the, the dry cleaner were willing to go forward with the sale of that property was based on their continuing to be there in a, in a much more reduced capacity. So initially, when that building was built, that all the dry cleaning was done on-site. Now it's part of a chain operation, and so it's strictly the, the dry cleaning is done elsewhere and dropped off. And at that location, the customers come in and pick and, pick up and drop off the dry cleaning there. So it only would require a much, much smaller building than what they currently have, but we weren't able to move forward with that site without their involvement initially.
There's another tenant that no longer does business there. There, there used to be another tenant in that building, years and years and years.
Correct, there was a, I think a photography, a development.
That, that has been vacant for some time now.
Yeah. So for, so who owns that property now?
We do.
So you are the landlord?
Well, we're, but we're, we do it, but we're subjected to the lease that's, that we have. The dry cleaner has a lease for, you guys have those terms? Don, you have them?
Yeah.
So what, what's the, it's, they have five years and then another five-year renewal option? 10 years? And a five?
So if you're combining the lots, I'm curious why you're doing that. And I'm not trying to press too hard here, but...
No, that's fine.
You know, you've got the dry cleaners, which is a tenant with a long-term lease arrangement, and you've got Lamborghini trying to fit a dealership in here. Why, why combine the two lots in the first place? What's the advantage there?
Yeah.
Let's let someone smarter answer that question.
No, that's all right. So, so the advantage was the, the lock configuration. So I think when, when Paul referenced our initial plan, we were all slammed on the one site. So there was, there was an option to look at that. The preference for the building layout and the size of the layout was, was this configuration, which required us to, to get on to this other piece of property. So basically, taking advantage of more land is the advantage of combining the land for, for our building.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any last questions for the applicant? Mr. Swanson, then we'll go to you, Ms. McDonald.
No, go ahead, please.
So watching and listening to the Planning Commission, there was quite a bit of conversation, which I thought was really relevant to how we think about this in terms of your, how you operate this facility. Because, you know, when you think of a car dealership, you think of farther, farther east down the road, right? But it was interesting, the way it was described or attempted to be described, I think maybe it wasn't fully understood by those who were here, that it's more of a concierge-type approach. So issues like, I think it'd be really good to understand, because traffic is going to be a big issue here. It's a big chance with this site, period. And so I think it'd be good to hear, you know, how many full-time team members you have that are going to base here, what kind of traffic you think you're going to have, delivery of cars, how and where, because it felt like it was much different than your typical dealership.
Yeah. I don't think we're going to have those kind of windy characters that are out there blowing around and the, you know, big blow-up things on the roof and stuff. Yeah, this is, this is a completely different kind of a dealership than anything that you could ever typically think of. As an example, you know, most of our stores write somewhere between 40 to 100 repair orders a day on vehicles that need to be repaired. This dealership might write one. You know, and so the, the, we get a total of 50 Lamborghinis a year, and those are all pre-sold. So this is a franchise where the product is sold well in advance of it actually arriving, so you're never sitting there with a lot of inventory as you kind of typically think of a dealership in terms of new or used cars. Because the cars are pre-sold, we have to carry four cars in stock, one of each of their four models, and that's basically all that will be there. The size of the team, you know, I don't, we don't have exact numbers for you yet, but seven, eight, nine people. This is very, very small. And that's, that's the way they kind of want this thing, they, meaning Lamborghini. This is a boutique operation. It's not a volume deal. It's not a typical car dealership. So it's a, it's, it's quiet by comparison to a car dealership. So like, say 50 new cars a year, that's all we get. So it doesn't matter what we do in terms of like how fast we sell them or anything, you just, 50 is what you get. So it's, you know, this is, we're talking about, you know, a little over four cars a month compared to like the dealerships you referenced out here on 394. Those dealerships are selling 200 cars a month, you know? So it's, it's a, it's a very different kind of a store. And remember too, that, you know, a good amount of the 50 cars that'll be sold out of this store won't even stay in Minnesota. This is, you know, so you're going to be selling cars to somebody in New York or California or Florida or whatever that can't, you know, they want to get one of these cars as quick as they can, and the local dealer that might be in their area might have a four-year waiting list, and so they find somebody that they can get a car faster, and they pick up the car and they're gone, and we don't ever see them again. So this is a little different than most dealerships in the fact that most customers typically are local that are buying from our other stores. This is, you're, this is a national deal in terms of where the cars could end up. We might end up with the 50 cars that we get a year, maybe only half of them end up in Minnesota, maybe less. And these, and the people that are going to buy them locally, those cars will be parked in the wintertime. You know, they're going to be, this is a summertime product only, other than the one product they have, which is a, a small SUV. So that one, maybe you'll be driving around, so just different.
Mr. Swanson, a follow-up question?
Yeah. Will you do maintenance on these cars here?
Well, will we do maintenance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Where's the next closest Lamborghini dealership to here?
Chicago.
Chicago. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember McDonald?
I have just two questions for you, Mr. Walzer. The, I thought there were four, but the three parking spots I see in the front yard, are those dedicated to the laundry or they, for the car dealership?
They are dedicated to laundry.
Okay. Oh, in theory, that would go away if there wasn't a laundry there?
In theory, if there was not a laundry, yes.
And what do, what does Lamborghini require you for signage?
So we would have a monument sign and a building sign.
Okay, and a monument sign is on a big pole with a, right? You mean by a monument?
Monument sign, like a typical, you know, sign that would, a typical sign that would be your, your ordinances. So it's just a eight-foot tall or what, I don't know what the ordinance reads offhand, but not a pylon sign on a big pole.
Does, does Lamborghini have any requirements for their signage?
They do have, they have requirements, but they offer different sizes because depending on the municipality we go into, there's different sign ordinances. So it's just the Lamborghini logo is essentially what, what's on their sign.
I'm trying to get an idea of the scale. I was really concerned about their gateway, and I want it to feel like Wayzata and not like you've entered Lamborghini. So I'm trying to get, can you be more specific on what their minimum requirements are for size?
It really, I mean, the best way I can answer at this point is our, any signage we put on would meet Wayzata zoning ordinance. So Lamborghini dictates the look of it, but we're, we're required to meet your size restrictions. So if you had a 200 square foot...
I think this may be a better question for staff, so I apologize.
Okay, all right.
Did you have any further questions?
No.
Okay. Any other questions of, of the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Walzer and team. Bring it back to council to discuss reactions, pros and cons to staff recommendation of approval. So who would like to begin the, oh, actually, do we have any cards? Actually, I apologize, should have asked that. Do we have any cards?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Apologize for missing that step. Now we'll bring it back. Who would like to weigh in first?
Mayor, could I ask staff to give me a little clarity on our signage requirements?
Absolutely. Go ahead. Address your question to staff, please.
Any requirements for car dealerships?
Councilmember McDonald, Mayor Mullen, Director Sharp's looking at that right now. I will say there's very limited space and there's signs setbacks, so I don't know what the height or square footage is, but they're going to be really square, freestanding signs, let alone what they have on their building.
Well, even a monument sign, sounds like that one's in the running for the applicant, so minimums or restrictions on monument signs. And then if we have any sort of language in our code about lighting of car dealerships is another thing.
I don't think we have any specific requirements for the car dealership use. It's more just lighting on-site in general.
So Mayor, council member, the lighting I can answer, because I was prepared for that very question. We do not have specific standards to, for a car dealership. However, we do, as City Manager Dahl noted, we do have general lighting standards within the commercial district. In terms of signage, getting you the area right now, that does semi-depend upon a couple of factors, which is why I want to do a little bit of additional research.
Please, thank you, take your time. Thanks.
Okay. While he's researching that, are there any last questions to staff? We just did get two public comment cards, so while he's doing that, I'll invite Mr. Straka to the dais for commentary. Mr. Straka?
Gordy Straka, 130 Huntington Avenue, which abuts the back of the station and has for years. We just wanted to, we've, we've met with Walzers, and they've been very good with working with the neighborhood. We've had a couple meetings with them, and we talked about lighting, and we've talked about noise, and they have always worked with us and had ideas and put things up, so we're pretty confident... we're pretty confident that they would be good neighbors. They said no, no used cars, no highlights, and so far, they've been super to us. So, we would really, the neighborhood is in favor of dealership, because it's, well, it was a service station for, since 1938, as I worked there when I was in high school, and I wasn't in high school in thirty-eight. That Horace Falkenstein was there for thirty, since thirty-eight on, and it's, it was a hole, whoops, excuse me, it was a hole there between me and the station, but that got filled over the years, so now it's up, and they've built a retaining wall and said they're going to add, add to it to bring it up to grade, the retaining wall. And also, we're, we're hoping for variance in fence height for the eight-foot fence, both towards me and also over by the apartments, because that would certainly help things. But pretty much the neighborhood's in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Straka.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Hoagland. Welcome. Just state your name and address, and you're welcome to address us.
Good evening. My name is Greg Hoagland, 120 Chevy Chase Drive. Gordy, I'm the owner, along with my wife, of the multifamily property adjacent to the south of the property there. And I think one thing that I want to reference here is the significant water that has come down that hill, and you guys should have been there last week or this week, okay? That water that comes off that property comes down through our, our property and goes all the way down to four, five, six home sites, and we've been dealing with that for, I don't know, since the thirties, right? And it's significant, okay? And one of the advantages of, of making the improvement to this property is water, in my opinion, okay? And I just want to reinforce that. If it's, if this is not a fit, then we're going to sit and wait. And is that going to be a medical building, or a dentist office, or what have you? And I think no matter what you put there, you, the traffic counts, whether it's retail or a medical building or what have you, the traffic counts are going to be higher than a Lamborghini dealership that sells fifty cars a year, okay? So, there's a little bit. One is the water challenge. Two is, if not now, what is going to go in there in the future? Because we've had the caribou conflicts and the drive-through, is it going to be a dentist office? What, what is going to be there? I think it's the perfect fit, because there's going to be a lot less traffic. It's a boutique exclusivity dealership, and again, I just, what would go there, okay? We've all had to drive by it for years, and there's a side of me of saying, okay, I get it, in 2025, they sell cars in shopping malls and what have you. The dealership experience is totally different. We're not having Carrillas on the roof and, and all, selling hot dogs and stuff like that. So, I think it's a really perfect fit, and I've been around in a lot of city council meetings, and usually, the people adjacent to the property are the ones usually that has the most complaints, that we, we don't want it. And there's traffic, and the, and the tactics are the traffic, the noise, the lighting, the usual things. Gordy and I, along with these neighborhood meetings, we've met the Walzers. My tenants are going to be less than seven feet from this dealership, okay? But we're, we're for it, okay? So, I just want you to think about the water issues when you're deciding this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. I, I lived at 138 Huntington for eleven years, and I can personally attest to the water issue that you're, that you're referring to. So, now we've had public commentary, did that give you some time to address the question of Councilmember McDonald?
Mayor, yes, it did. Thank you very much for your flexibility with that. So, there are a couple of different answers that I want to be able to provide to this. The first is that the C3 district does have some very specific provisions for height when adjacent to arterial roadways. So, no more than thirty-foot above grade or forty-foot maximum height, specifically within the C3. Additionally, C3, for a monument sign or ground sign, a maximum of eight feet in height, would allow sixty square feet of area. For a freestanding sign, which would be that thirty-foot or forty-foot, it's thirty-five square foot in area. And then, all of that is subject to the fact that this is a PUD, which with the PUD, it does allow the city to, some additional provisions that could come forward, limiting sign, limiting to that more boutique, limiting lighting, and other community and site-specific aspects that are some of the beauty of the PUD ordinance, or APUD ordinance, I should state, that could come forward, because that becomes a future negotiation with the city as part of that application. So, specific provisions could be placed that further limit beyond what code would already be.
Does that address your question?
That's great.
Okay. So, now I'll bring it back to council for deliberation and pros and cons of staff's recommendation of approval. So, who would like to weigh in?
I'm happy to.
Councilmember Parkill.
Thank you, Director Sharp, and the planning commission for all their work that they did. Thank you, Mr. Grease, and Straka, and Walser, and Hoagland, I appreciate your commentary. I think this is a great use of the property. I would very much like to see this here. My concerns are the quantity of variances and the design deviations. I'm hoping that the general plan can come back with, once you figure out what's going on with the dry cleaner, what you, you know, what you can figure out with what Lamborghini wants as far as signage and other requirements that the dealerships require. I think that hopefully, there can be less deviations, less variance. A lot to, to find some creative solutions is the right answer. I am okay with the, the fence on the backside of the property, I think that's appropriate. The parking spots in front, I, I don't love those. I don't care whether they're eighteen or twenty feet, but I don't love them in front, so maybe those can go away if we get rid of the dry cleaner. Land, my, one of my, there's just zero landscaping, and I realize there's not a landscaping plan yet, and that wasn't one of the requirements. But I, I am hoping that when you all come back, that there's a lot more attention to those kind of details. You know, we did the design standard, and I worked on that project, and we moved all commercial buildings up towards the front of the lot. That is my preference. I think that might be good for your showroom also, but I understand that it may not work in this situation. So, hopefully, there can be some consideration to that. I think being closer to the street for you guys would be great. I think PUD is the right direction, gives us some flexibility, given this unique and small site, and it also gives you the ability to be very creative and innovative. So, I guess, an issue that I would love to have addressed is if there is a way that we can mitigate the water problem for the neighbors. That would be something that I know you guys would think about doing, and it would be great to see that come back in the general plan. So, I hope to see this project come through, and I, and I like the concept.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkill. Who would like to go next? Anyone?
I guess I'll weigh in then. I share many of the thoughts that Councilmember Parkill shared. I do have some concerns about this. I'd like to see the dealership there, I'd certainly like to see that property developed. It's been sitting idle for far too long, and so I'd like to see something there. But I, too, was part of the design standards board, and the design standards that they're asking for, the deviations, don't fit with the vision that we had for the future of Wayzetta Boulevard, or even just our, our city in general. And that property certainly didn't comply with the design standards for all the things that were there before, but we now have an opportunity to make it comply with our vision for Wayzetta and Wayzetta Boulevard in the future. I think a lot of my concern about some of the variances that were being requested, and some of the design standards that are being requested, deviations that are being requested, would be solved if that was just one combined parcel with one business on it that had a lot more flexibility to design into that, that property, the kind of, of things that we want in our design standards, and it would mitigate some of the variances. I would like to see this go forward, but I can't see it going forward with its current design plan. There would have to be some pretty major compliance with, with the standards we've got. So, again, I'd like to see this thing go forward, but not in its current design format.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Okay. I'll go next. I'll go next. Thank you. I, I share some of the concerns with those who have spoken before me, and, and also some goals of seeing that property developed. One thing that hasn't been mentioned yet that has been weighing quite heavily on me is the feedback I get from the community, the most, one of the most pressing issues is luxury cars, loud mufflers, this destination to drive your fancy car, have people come here and watch you, the, the aftermarket mufflers that disrupt. And since, appreciate that only a fraction of the sales from this dealership will be driven on Lake Street and Wayzetta, but I think it really sets the tone, kind of creates a vibe that place for luxury cars, noisy ones at that, and which is, you know, fun for the visitors, but very bothersome to the community. And, and so, I'm, I'm really grappling with this at a concept level for that reason. I could be convinced of it, however, the plan that's in front of me, I just see so many things that go against the community values, like the walkability, the landscaping, the access points, I mean, the list is really quite long. So, as presented tonight, I can't support this concept plan for, for all those reasons stated. I, you know, I think the applicant made a very good point that perhaps they're a little out of sequence, and so I would encourage the applicant to look more closely at that sequence and come back to us if things could fit into that space a little, a little more neatly and aligned with the community.
Those comments and perspective. Councilmember Sorensen.
Yeah. I think it's important to keep in mind this is a concept plan. There's multiple steps ahead. There are more than the typical amount of variances, design deviations, CUPs that are surfacing in this, in this application. I would say the pre-existing conditions dictate a lot of these practical hardships. Inherent that this is a difficult and tricky site for parking. It, you have the existing cleaners onsite, the topography of the site, I mean, I think we're trying to do a lot with a very small footprint, if you could agree with the previous comments. I think if you have this entire site, it would look and feel a lot different, everyone would feel a little better about it. So, I mean, these aren't significant issues that would need to be dealt with moving ahead, with parking, the sidewalk issues, the lack of landscaping, and I think somehow we need some confirmation, assurances somehow that this thing's going to operate the way that it's been presented, and I think Councilwoman McDonald's comment about signage is very good also, so. But I would agree with some of the other comments about traffic. I mean, if not this, what? Now, this has sat for a long, long time. I think it's significant that the immediate neighbors are supporting this, that really hasn't been the case in the past at all. I would generally agree with the planning commission on this, that if you look at the criteria, that it's met the criteria to at least move this ahead at, at, at the planning concept, and knowing that's going to be, there'll be significant scrutiny moving ahead. The one, the other comment I would make, a bit on the side, but, you know, in the, in the corridor study we did for Wayzetta Boulevard, to me, a building with any burnished block finish on any side of the building doesn't, doesn't, isn't the quality type of material that, that, that I think would fit. So, something to maybe be dealt with down the road if this moves ahead, but all in all, I'm in favor of giving this proposal life and moving it ahead.
Thank you. So, I'll try to just be additive, not duplicative. I would support this concept plan moving forward. You know, I lived on that street for eleven years, and I think Mr. Straka stated it very well. In the first six years that I lived there, it was a gas station, service station, whatever. This is a less intensive use than what was there previously for that period of six years that I lived behind it and for the decades previous to that. On the opposite end of the spectrum, people talk about a Caribou Coffee. It wasn't just a Caribou Coffee, it was a new concept of Caribou, drive-through Caribou Coffee. Can you imagine what the turning in, in entry and exit of a drive-through coffee shop would be in that location? It'd be an utter nightmare. So, I think we've landed at an appropriate use. I echo Councilmember Pluckish's encouragement, if there is a way to resolve, you know, getting that current tenant, the dry cleaner, out, and I think it gives you more flexibility. I understand that's a business and a contractual thing, but you stated your intent, and I encourage you to try to resolve it. I think that's the best long-term answer, and I think there's an additive benefit to it. The curb cut that's on Central Avenue to access that dry cleaner is dangerous. I mean, it is like, you're, you're not going to find anyone in code that would allow you to have a curb cut five feet after a stoplight to turn into a dry cleaner. So, I mean, you know, for all those reasons, I think cleaning that up would be great. Last comment would be finish. I, I support Councilmember Sorensen's recommendations on the finish of the exterior, and try to bring some landscaping. I mean, it's, it's concrete from curb cut to curb cut to the dinahreality building. If you can bring some landscaping in to green it up a little bit, I think that would be a welcome benefit. So, for all those reasons, I'm supportive of this concept plan moving forward at this time. So, with that, I think we would, I guess, hearing people's comments, I would accept a motion to, to move the concept plan forward with any additional commentary. I think that's the motion I would accept at this time.
Can I make just a little bit more commentary?
Sure.
If you don't mind, as you advised us to do. I just really want to reiterate the, the importance and the walkability of walkability in Wayzetta. It's one of our most loved assets as a community, and so buffers, but if you're not a walker, a buffer between a sidewalk and, and a busy road is a must. And same with a seven-foot wide sidewalk, those things, and, and trees, just, I just want to really stress, because I feel like this is going to be moved forward, and so I just, although I might not agree with the whole, the vibe- And so just, although I might not agree with the whole, the vibe and the concept, but in the nitty-gritty, I really would hope to see more compliance to our design standards and of course, our code. So, thank you.
Very, very helpful. Any other comments?
If I may, I'd like to add too, rather than just an aye or no vote to add a little bit to that, too.
Sure.
I will reiterate that I'd like to see this project move forward, but I can't agree with the concept plan that's laid before us because there are too many serious design deviations that are included in it. Things like the sidewalk and the width of the sidewalk and the buffer zone with the plants and the trees that hadn't been talked about. I would like to see all of that in the concept plan. Then I'd be totally in favor of it. But the concept plan as it's before us today doesn't, does not include any of those things. And they're just too many. It was hard to keep track of all the variances and design standards that we had to consider for a pretty small lot. I would love to be for it, but I cannot in its current design. I'd like to see it come back with these things addressed. So, thank you for allowing me to.
No, absolutely. And, you know, whoever makes the motion can make a staff recommended, they can adjust it. So, I mean, I guess it's really up to us to decide, you know, are we going to have a motion for what staff's recommending? Is it going to be modified? Is there an alternative motion? So that's still an option to us here, so. Would anyone like to make a motion supporting staff recommendation to move the concept plan forward?
Mayor, I would make that motion to adopt Resolution 21-2025 approving a PUD concept plan at 10:22 and 10:42 Wayzetta Boulevard East.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then I guess let's just do a roll call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Sorensen?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Nay.
Councilmember Plekish?
No.
Councilmember Parkill?
Aye.
Mayor Mullen?
Aye. So that motion passes three to two. I hope that the applicant, and I know, take to heart some of the comments that you heard here tonight, and do your best effort to bring forward the concerns of both Councilmember Plekish and Councilmember McDonald as to the site plan, you know, the sidewalk, the look and feel of the building, the landscaping, that those details are brought forward in the best way that you possibly can. And thank you for your being here tonight. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Are there any other folks out there on teams for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, there is not.
Okay. We'll move on to City Manager's Report. Over to you, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few events coming up for the holiday weekend, just want to mention, of course, we have our famous flying pancake breakfast on Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The National Society of the Children of the American Revolution, Lake Minnetoka Society. That, as they always do, there'll be a short ceremony, flag raising, rifle salute at 10:00 a.m. as well. Wonderful event. Come early. The line moves quickly. It's well-attended. Vets eat free, and you get to catch your pancakes, and they're really good. So I encourage everybody to come out and support a great organization and eat well.
Spoiler alert, there's a member of our community that's getting an award. I'm not going to say who, but there's a member of our community getting an award at that event.
All right. All the more reason to go. And then our awesome fire department is hosting once again the Kitty Parade and the Mini Olympics on the Fourth of July. The Kitty Parade will start at 10:00 a.m. on the corner of Park and Broadway. Parents, please accompany your kid to the parade in order to participate, and please do not bring any battery-operated or motorized vehicles to the event. Maybe there's been some issues with that in the past. And then in addition, after that, at 12:30, the fire department will be hosting the Mini Olympics, all sorts of cool events. I am told that councilmembers cannot participate, cannot participate. So great events going on for all ages on the Fourth of July to celebrate our nation's birthday. One last thing. There we go. Do you mind zooming that in a little bit? I want to acknowledge and encourage the entire community to wish our beloved Kurt Claprich well. He has indicated his intent to retire after, believe it or not, this is not a typo or anything, 40-plus years of serving our community, not only at Public Works, but in many other facets as well, including our fire department. And if you've seen Kurt, everyone's seen Kurt around town. He's always there.
He's not retiring from the fire department.
That's true. That's a good point. Thank you. He's still going to be serving on the fire department, but his quote-unquote, you know, full-time job with Public Works as the park's lead, which he's really supervised all of our wonderful park amenities in town for decades. Anyway, we'll gush more about him for that event, but it will be on July 16th from 2:30 to 5:00 p.m. at the Public Works facility. For whatever reason, you can't make it, when you see him, congratulate him, send him a note, do whatever. He certainly deserves it. He is the epitome of Wayzetta and our values. He's always there. He's completely reliable. He's the friendliest person I think I've ever met in my life. And he's just a incredible servant, a civil servant. We're happy for him, but he'll be incredibly missed as well. So stop by July 16th.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Not to take anything away from Mr. Kurt Claprich, but we're also hosting sort of an open house for you, Jeff Dahl, for your departure on Tuesday, July 15th at 4:30 p.m. Just didn't want to, so if you haven't caught on to the news, Jeff is moving on to the city of Woodbury, and we're going to honor him with an open house on Tuesday, the 15th at 4:30. Does anyone have any questions of City Manager for the City Manager Report?
Just one. Are you going to be here for the next council meeting, or is this your last one?
I'll be here for the next one.
Okay. Councilmembers, I challenge you to prepare for that.
That's a challenge.
Good roast. Bring a fix.
I'm ready. Bring it.
I did have three questions that I wanted to ask you in the City Manager's Report. They're pretty simple. There was a great article in the Lake Minnetoka Magazine talking about the history of our train display, outdoor trains display. And I know there's been some vandalism down there recently, vandalizing the trains and the outdoor set. Where are we at with, you know, trying to mitigate that with some additional security and ideas to mitigate that?
Yeah, we're working with the volunteers to put a motion detector, motion-detected light, or whatever you call those, to make sure that, you know, if someone's back there, light goes on, and A, that will scare them off, and B, people can see.
And do we feel like we're going to be able to get that in place relatively soon?
I don't have an update on it, but I know Public Works is working with the volunteers to make it all happen.
Okay, great. And then there was a sign that was down on, right at the BP for the entry and exit to 394. Is that construction with that?
That was taken out by this weekend storm. I don't know how it was taken out, if it was lightning, but I don't know where the status of that is, if it's already up or it's in process. But I know the county is working on that.
Okay, great. So it's a storm-related issue, but it's being addressed?
Yep.
Okay, the last one was, we were working with the Karish and Gardner property to try to put a pedestrian accessway to replace the cutoff. Where are we at with that?
It took a little bit to kind of get to pull the trigger point on it with just the nuances of the design and who's funding what. We got there, and I saw them working on it today, so it should be up within the next year.
Underway. The change that we had hoped for has been accepted by everyone now. It's just a matter of getting it in place.
Exactly. And I saw them working on it today, so.
Yeah, it'd be great to have it before the Fourth Holiday if it at all.
It will be.
Oh, great. Okay, that's all I have. Any other comments from?
I have a question. When are the speed limit signs going to be changed?
Not for, probably around late this year, early next year. It's going to take a while. We have to communicate. We have to get all the signs, and we really have to develop a plan. So it's going to be a process.
Okay. All right. Hearing no other questions, I would accept a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Or actually, we have to vote, don't we? Is the motion second? Any further discussion? Do we vote yea or nay?
Yay!
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's like, whoa!
Yeah, no, I know.